But now you gotta see that it's aiming at the screen. Well, you gotta look at the screen.
I can't. I don't see anything.
You don't?
Alma, why don't you look, Alma?
I'm looking up there. Are you crazy?
I don't...
Frank?
Does it... I mean, it's recorded, but I don't see anything on the screen.
Why is that?
It's not the lid?
It says it's recorded.
The lid? How do you...
It should've opened up when you turned it on, I would think.
Well...
But that's all he said.
There you go. Ta-tin.
Now, can you... Now, just aim it over there.
Take the lid off.
Can you see it?
Does it move up, Alma?
I thought it did. Or maybe it's the lens that you have to turn to aim. Can you see there? It's kinda hard to see because you're not behind it.
Uh...
Do you see it now?
Uh-uh.
On the little lens to see the picture? What's it aiming at?
The chairs.
Oh.
It should...
It should move up.
It should move up?
Yeah, I would think so.
I don't wanna break it.
I know. That's all he said, is that you just adjust the... I thought it was the lens, that you just move the lens. Now, where is it?
Same spot, or now it's going towards this way?
Oh, here, so maybe.
It's gotta move up somehow.
Huh?
It doesn't move up.
Really?
No.
Can't be getting on the floor.
I know. I don't know what he's doing. Uh, I don't know.
No?
Mm-mm.
It seems like it's on a little ball where it would roll. Like, right there, yeah, like, it's on a ball, and it would just roll over.
Yeah, it's...
Where is it? Oh, yeah, it's aiming at the chairs right now. You know, he showed us, he said, you just want to...
Rolando, how did you... Did you move this up?
Does it move?
Just move it this way.
No, but did you move it up?
Yeah, but it's to the ground.
It's like this, too.
Raise the camera.
You come raising it, I don't gonna...
And I'm coming out of the camera already. Hello, hi, Mom.
No, it's aiming at the chairs. Does it move? There you go.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, that he didn't know if it would lift up. But it was already there. Where is it aiming? At the chairs, right? There, no kidding.
Hey, Don, kicks.
There?
There.
Is it aiming there?
Yeah, bah.
Yes? You're on.
You're on.
The pandemic for you, some kind of...
Yes, it is.
Call to order at six o'clock. My business is here by giving that a special council meeting of the town of Laguna Vista, Texas, will be held Monday, the third day of November twenty fourteen at six o'clock PM in the City Hall Building at one twenty-two Fernandez Street in Laguna Vista. We're going to be led with our invocation and our prayers by Wanda, Councilwoman Wanda Ransdriesen. If you'll all keep on your heads, we're going to give a word of prayer. Our Father, our Lord and our...
Our Father, our Son, and our Holy Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not intend to take this from them, but we will. In the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas, to the people of Texas, under God, one indivisible.
We call Alma. Mayor Susie Houston here. Mayor Pro-Tech Mike Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wanda Rice.
Here.
Frank Davalos.
Here.
Deputy Governor's absent, Gary Meskey.
Here.
And Richard Nohosa.
Here.
Do we need to make a motion to excuse that team?
I make a motion to excuse them.
It's not written on here as an action item on...
Which one?
Three, we'll call excused abscences. Can we still make a motion?
Yes. You probably didn't, yes, you...
Okay, alright. Okay, the motion to excuse Councilman Keplinger was made by Councilwoman Rice and then by Councilwoman Frank Davalos. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. At this time, audience open forum. At this time, audience is allowed five minutes for person to address the council on any topic. There's no discussion or formal action taken without the agenda item. The speaker must identify before speaking. Speaker request form must be presented to the city secretary prior to the meeting. I'll go on, yes?
I'll first? Oh, good.
You're first?
Good, thank you. Again, Roelte Rodriguez. Tonight, I'm here representing Rotary, the Port Isabel Rotary Club. And I wanted just to give you guys a little information. Back on September the twenty-seventh, we had a rescue run. And the Rotary Club of Port Isabel has started an endowment fund. And I'm pretty sure you all were a little bit familiar with that, but I wanted to make sure that you understood. The club is working on two things. The policy is on its final stages, and the application process is already complete. Before Chief McGinnis left, of course, I worked with him and Sergeant O'Geehan to make sure they participated. Our rescue run this year was on the twenty-seventh, which was the week of the recognition of the first responders. We decided that to do it on that week instead of Police Week, or Fire Week, or anything like that, because this was the first year that they actually recognized the first responders. As a whole, we took that emblem, and of course, the Rotary Club, about three years ago, started one fundraiser, and we put five thousand dollars in the bank. And how this works is that if any of our first responders from the Laguna Madre area get either hurt, and God forbid, we should lose a first responder, then the club, the Port Isabel Rotary Club, will then give the department director an application for them to fill out. The Rotary Club has a committee. That committee will get together, and then they'll decide to write out a check for that first responder or that first responder's family. That fund is strictly for that purpose only. We do not use that fund for anything else. I wanted you guys to be very clear. When, you know, we go out for either sponsorships and stuff, it's basically the Rotary Club trying to help our first responders in this area. Even though the weather was pretty bad on September the twenty-seventh, I mean, it was raining and stuff, we still had over a hundred and fifty runners and walkers. Okay? We, at this point, decided that we were gonna split those funds because the other half of that money still goes to sponsor some of our local projects. Whether it be the four scholarships we give out to the students at the end of the year. We also sponsor a student of the month every month. And so, the Rotary Club wanted to make sure that we had a little bit, and we split up. The first time we did it, like I said, we raised five thousand dollars, and that's what was put in the account then. This year, we raised another four thousand dollars. So, two thousand dollars is going into the First Responders Endowment Fund, and two is going into the Rotary Club, so they could also work on their projects. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update, that we do have seven thousand dollars in the endowment fund. When we are done with the policy, we will bring a copy of that policy, which Chief McGinnis had a copy of, a draft, when we first started. But whenever we get done with it, I'll be back. Because I kinda, myself, and Matina, and Jackie Dempsey are overseeing these things. So, as soon as we're done, we'll be back to the town to drop off either to Rolando or whoever, you know, is in charge of that. So, you guys have the full policy about the endowment works. But I want you to just always know that we're here as a Rotary Club to take care of our local people, and especially our first responders. So, I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Item five. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the council and will be an active foreproofing by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I have.
No, we don't have any consent agenda.
Yes?
No.
I'm remitted.
The minutes are on, are you...
Okay, thank you. Number five, discussion, consideration, possible action on each of the following items. Consideration and action to approve the minutes from the October fourteenth, twenty fourteen regular meeting. Alma, your name is on there?
There's one correction, I believe, on the places. I believe that Councilmember Keplinger and Meskey both said place five, and that was the only correction.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, may I add, there's a correction to the adjournment. Councilmember Keplinger made the motion, and during the room, I second the motion.
So, with those two corrections... Are there any other corrections? Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
My second. Motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Davalos, supported by Councilwoman Rice, is to approve the minutes with the two corrections. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item... Consideration and action to approve this the middle of a grant application to the Texas Forest Service for a brush truck for the fire department. Chief O'Geehan is not here. Rolando?
Mayor, Council, this is the application attached to the application submit to the Texas Forest Service for the purchase of a brush truck. They provide grant for ninety percent of the cost of the brush truck, and the town is responsible for ten percent. We've already budgeted money on this budget for that ten percent. The maximum amount that we can ask for is two hundred thousand. And then, Chief McGinnis was here, we talked about the estimate cost of a brush truck, he is about under sixty-five, under seventy thousand. So, we're applying for the two hundred thousand, the Van Waters. We go out for bids for three brush trucks, and we select the lowest one, and then they work with us on other payment. So, this is to basically initiate that process to secure this project. Which is a good thing for the fire department, very much needed.
Discussion?
It'll also help us, and our efforts, to try to get that fire zone...
Yeah, understanding the brush truck, and I'm sure it's, the terminology says a lot, but all, will it be used for other than the brush, anything?
Well, I wish I could... I mean, obviously, there's fire, I mean, it'll be providing support.
I think they go into areas that our fire trucks can't go into. Isn't that right, Mr. Randolph, is that so, right to you? Because I remember talking about this.
What's our neighbor's name here?
Port Isabel?
No.
Laguna Heights?
Yes.
Back in...
Yes, remember that they tried to put a fire out, they didn't have any water. So, they had to go to Port Isabel and get water and back. So, that's one of the cases where it could be very good for us to have it. But the fire district, obviously.
Port Isabel, one of the hindrances that we supposedly can't in the fire district, emergency services.
My neighbor lived the back of... We have a wildlife zone behind our house, and my neighbor lit on fire a few months ago, Mona's lawn. And they had to call Port Isabel to come over. There was access to go, and they had to drive the brush truck around to his backyard to get back there, so...
Our fire trucks couldn't go back there?
They couldn't, they didn't...
No, okay.
They couldn't respond because of where it was.
So, the brush truck has a water tank on it?
Yeah, it has a water tank.
Four hundred gallons, and it's large.
It's got pumps where it can pump as well, and...
Yeah.
I think it's like the home via fire trucks.
Yeah, it's like a big tire.
Yeah.
And the firefighters were here at the cleanup event, they were eating hot dogs and chips, and I asked them, "What do you need at the fire station?" And they said, "We need a brush truck." They all agreed. They understand the importance of a brush truck. "Hey, you know, this looks good." So, hopefully, in the next few weeks, once the application is submitted, we'll get word from the Texas Forest Service, and we can move forward on securing one.
So, let's put that, with that kind of expand our zone.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that they were saying, right? That we didn't have a brush truck.
Our registered services.
And they didn't want to, they didn't want to give it to us.
Yeah.
One of the many excuses.
Yeah, no, I know.
I'll make a motion to approve this middle of the grant application for the brush truck.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Motion on the floor by Mayor Houston, seconded by Councilwoman Hannah Loza, to approve this middle of the grant application to the Texas Forest Service for the brush truck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item C, this is first reading. Consider the first reading of ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash thirty-one, providing for spaying and neutering of pets. Mr. Bill?
Mayor, Council, let me address that item, and I guess the following is relative to it. We recognize the importance of being responsible pet owners, and I don't want to be in a position where we're actually mandating somebody do something. And working on these ordinances, I discovered that Port Isabel has a very, very effective program. Port Isabel has a very effective program on spaying and neutering that our residents already taking advantage of. Actually, where I chatted with Bill, I believe, from the Port Isabel Humane Society.
Yes, thank you.
No, from Laguna Madre Humane Society. She says, "The spaying and neutering program we offer our resident in Port Isabel, we're extending to Laguna Vista. They're paying also the same way it's a people in Port Isabel are paying, which is forty dollars for cats, fifty for dogs." Now, if you have the same, then our, I was suggesting a little bit more, but... So, our local residents are taking advantage of that program. And they're also taking advantage of the microchip program, which is a, Port Isabel Shelter offers it for twenty-five dollars per dog, per pet. So, I don't want to be in a position where we're mandating, or simply want to raise awareness. And if something can be done on our part administratively to raise the awareness on the importance of spaying and neutering our pets, and as well as microchipping, I mean, we, at the staff, we're all for that. I mean, all of us that own pets. I mean, Laguna is such a very unique community, in that it's not like other communities, we see wandering dogs, or little puppies wandering, that are abandoned. Most people are here responsible. So, it's our part in trying to be proactive and be positive in raising the awareness on the importance of being responsible pet owners. And if we can help in any way with these ordinances, or even just publicly making available these programs to the community, it will go a long way to continue to be responsible pet owners. And minimize loose animals and litters or ground game. So, I don't want to mandate anything, but anything we can do to raise awareness on, we at the staff, we're all in favor of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Personally, I think it'd be good. I am personally aware of a...
Mr. Lane, Mr. Fletcher, thank you.
Personally aware of several situations...
Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane, we're trying to have a discussion.
I'm aware of some certain situations in our city limits, which is towards Laguna Heights, where there are several people who breed animals for sale. And they have no breeding license, they don't take care of the animals when they do breed them. And the animals happen to get run over in the street because of the lack of care. So, policing this, I think, is gonna be a difficult thing. But I think what you said is the right words, Rolando, in awareness. If we can get people to pay attention to what they're trying to do, and if they are legitimate breeders, I'm all for that. But I'm not for the people who breed these puppies regardless of what breed they are. And put them in a cage out here on Highway one hundred or Brady's Land Road and try to sell them, then you can stop there and look. And most of the time that I've stopped and looked, the animals aren't well taken care of. There's not enough water, there's, it's just a matter of them trying to get dollars for a dog. And I think this is very important for us to try to do something about it. That's my opinion.
So, I can start with these, what type of ideas, or what kind of plan would we come up with to create an awareness plan? Either the reblessing, or flyers at everybody's home? That, you know, we have that, and whatever you can talk to your... What we want to do, so what kind of plan would we come up with to create an awareness that we have, that there's... I know, I agree, because I've three of my dogs, sheltered dogs, that I adopted from the clinic over there in Bed, and all the spay and neutered the dogs, did the microchipping, and so it works, with their customer and people I know. So, how would we come up with a plan to create an awareness in our community that it exists?
I think, I think a link on the website, where we talk about the importance of microchipping, the importance of spaying and neutering animals, and how it controls the population. And I think having a link to the shelter, the Port Isabel Shelter as well, because they have a very good program out there. What they're trying to do is wonderful. And also a link to their Laguna Madre Humane Society, is what they're doing as well, is they're creating a lot of positive change. And so, anything we can do, so...
I've heard rumors that Brownsville wants to copy or emulate what they're doing over here. That's how it could start.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is unfortunate. How would we enforce this?
Well, and that's, okay, our animal control officers are gonna be going through training on the second week of December. Our public works employees are gonna go through animal control training. Regardless of these are adopted or not, or anything, they're gonna be trained to, they see a loose dog, how to restrain it, and, you know, so all those things, they're gonna go through a day-long training.
Is it a problem in our town, do we have a...
Not...
Are we likely to hike with all the animals running around? Because I'm out here all hours of the time, and I never got once at the stop for an animal to cross the street. You know, I never got a stop. I never had to do that, I just don't... I see the proactive that you're doing, but I just don't...
Well, I think, no, we're not at that level yet. And that's simply, I was trying to be positive and proactive, but I think if we raise awareness on the importance of these programs out there and encourage people, that Port Isabel, I mean, City of Port Isabel gives a twenty-dollar voucher for their spay and neutering program. We're not at that position. But they're also working with our residents for the same reasons. They charge people...
This is fifty dollars, forty and fifty bucks. So, if somebody has three dogs, it's a... Some people don't have the money to do this. But that's just my opinion, I just... You're dipping in the people's pockets here, where they're mandating this.
Yeah, I'm not wild about mandating anything to anybody. If we had an outcry in the community, yeah, I'd be all for it. But just forcing you to do it, I don't think so.
I agree.
But that's my opinion.
In my opinion, Zach, I don't think you should tell anyone about what they have to do. That's crazy. Do we have a pretty strong dog, animal ordinance here now? That's the law. You know, these should all be optional. Anybody wants to do it, they can do it.
I think that we should encourage people, spaying their dogs, but maybe not so strongly, Mr. Councilwoman Loza?
I would just like to add that there's ways we can be creative to let people know that you'd like to encourage them to spay their dogs and to, you know, to microchip them. You can't mandate anything, but I think we can create a plan, a program. There's ways to do this subtly, for people to start to hear about it, read about it, that in our community, you know, to be responsible pet owners, and take it to the next level. And like Mr. Davalos says, it's, you know, it can be forty, fifty dollars a pet, but it's up to them how they want to do it, one pet at a time, budget, whatever, but at least know that a lot of people may not know that that's being offered at that reasonable price. Because if you go to a lot of other veterinarians, it's ninety dollars a dog. That's just for spay or neuter, that doesn't include the microchip or anything else, so this is very affordable.
And back to your concern about Laguna Heights, maybe a sign campaign? Maybe if your dogs, cats, spay and neuter in Port Isabel, and have it done, have signs over there. Because not everyone gets an email blast, or goes to their old page, or reads the newspaper. That might be an additional... Mr. Messy, any suggestions?
I've had to stop, I can't tell you how many times in Laguna Heights the government's crossing the road, not mentioning the kid, but the animal control in Laguna Vista proper is one issue, which I think is minimal, like what you're going to agree. But as far as, you know, our city limits extended into Laguna Heights, it's a whole new, it's a whole new problem. And I certainly think that if we don't do something, and I don't like the government running my life, by me, or the city government, but we need to do something to to provide a informative way of not allowing these people to breed these animals without a proper license. If we can do that, we can minimize a lot of the issues that we have in Laguna Heights. I don't know of any proper in Laguna Vista. But I do know of several in Laguna Heights that do this just for raising money. And these people that are doing this are not going to spend any money to provide shots or anything else for their dog. All they're interested in is breeding their dogs, and they even breed their dogs with their puppies. So, when you talk about legitimate breeding deal, this is so far out in left field as compared to a legitimate breeding home for animals, it's totally different. All they care about is a numbers game and getting dollars for them. So, if there's a way we could do something where you can't breed animals within our city limits without a license, that might help. Again, policing this is, as Frank said over there, could be a real issue, and it could, and I understand that. But I also understand that the situation in Laguna Heights is really a bad situation. And somehow, we need to do our part and try to get it under control.
That sounds like it's a whole other issue than the spaying and neutering of the license for breeding. It needs to be addressed at a certain time. Council, do you have anything to say to this?
Well, yes, it is a different issue, and I think that it needs to be afforded by way of an ordinance that deals with the breeding of animals for sale purposes. Secondly, you may have some regulations that, in fact, conducting a sale is in the community, you have the community permit, it's something to sell, to sell anything, including animals. And so, those regulatory mechanisms may be the way to control some of the issues that Commissioner Meski is most concerned about. This is a little bit different, this is just kind of general imposition, and everybody just feeling...
Then maybe we should have a, Rolando, looking at some ordinances on what you suggested.
And I'll be happy to discuss that with him in the coming, in the coming weeks, to see if we can come up with something that is more specifically in tune or aligned with what Commissioner Meski is concerned about.
We are comfortable with that? Someone wants to make a motion on this?
There's no action on this.
Oh, yeah, there is no action.
Look, I didn't know if somebody still wanted to make a motion on this. Well, that's the first reading, you're right, okay. I'm on the wrong year again, I guess. Okay, item E, first reading. To consider the first reading of ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash thirty-two, providing for mandatory microchip program for dogs and pets.
Same thing, we just simply want to raise awareness. Council, we'll work with, we'll work with Port Isabel and encouraging people to take advantage of those programs they have out there, where they charge twenty-five dollars. Some of the local vets are charging seventy-five, at least seventy and ninety dollars for microchipping. They charge twenty-five. And they do it there at the shelter, so...
Any further discussion on the microchipping?
Is this gonna come back next month as a second reading?
No.
Okay, good.
So, this won't come back? No. So, they will... Will they be able to discuss?
Will this go back? Any further discussion on this? E, update on the twenty-eleven certificates of obligation, Rolando?
We have fifty-five thousand, salary twenty dollars and twenty-two cents in available funds. The difference between last month and this month is a dollar and fifty-nine cents of interest earnings. Fire hydrants, we're waiting for the Water District to advise us when they're gonna start to work on enlarging that line, so we can go in and install a fire hydrant.
I have a question about that. It seems like we've talked about that several times now. This is like maybe our third month with the Water District?
Yeah, well, because there were orders of supplies, and the rain had held them back.
The rains held them.
So, Boil told me that as soon as they start the project, go with, that was it. And we don't want to...
Should go snowstorm while you're in there?
Correct. We don't want to install a fire hydrant on the four-inch water line. We could provide water, but it wouldn't be adequate for a fire.
Any discussion on that, I mean? Item F, Rolando?
We have a music by Payback this Saturday from five to nine. We have very, a few, we have a few vendors that have different types of foods and different things that people are gonna be selling. Heck, people's lines are gonna be performing. We're trying to get the Mariachi group. They're right now at state level, I believe, competing. They were trying to see if we can get them to perform. So, we've been advertising, we hope to have a good crowd. And Veteran State is on Tuesday at five-thirty. And Veteran's Day is on Tuesday at five-thirty. So, we invite all of you, we invite the public to be there, uh, to recognize veterans on Veteran's Day. We've been advertising as well, so.
And, um, Councilor, we do not have anything on the subjective session, so if we need to do anything.
I am in all states. The matter of which, Mr. Hunter, is in case, there's a hearing set tomorrow morning. Those of you that care about him, it's at nine o'clock in the morning in the one o'clock.
The one o'clock?
Uh, it's on the third floor of the Cameron County Court House, one oh-third District Court, Judge Yan, nine o'clock. If you show up, make sure you don't have a quorum in there.
Or sit by it.
Actually, if, if a quorum is present, that's an issue, so. We just try to have three, three or less.
Who are you supposed to meet?
We have a need to post that.
No, not for a potential quorum.
I'm going to go, so whoever wants to go with me, I'll even go. Three or seven, so it's not a quorum.
Yeah. Three or seven would not be a quorum.
No, exactly, order with me, like, three's good.
Mayor, you want to go with us, Mayor? Do you want to go with us?
Uh, no, because I don't want to get stuck there, so I have to get back to my. Thank you.
By the way.
Not that you'll earn a lot, a lot of fun, guys.
It's nine o'clock, but there's no guarantee that it'll be at nine as well.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, then, if there's no other items, who would like, I'll just somebody to make a motion to adjourn at six-thirty-one? Make a motion. Alright, motion on the floor, my, my Councilwoman Lus, seconded by Councilwoman Rice, adjourned at six-thirty-one. All those in favor, say yes, you have to do a lot of the talking. Motion, Council.
It's early, it's a technical problem. What if I also be, the, the lighting?